Okay, we'll give councilors another minute or so. I think we're one short, I think. All right.
See, Tantar?
It says, mine says eleven.
Oh, okay. Well, the last person just joined. Okay. All right. Before we get started tonight, Jared Agarman, the council president, we're going to remember Patricia Connolly died suddenly last, last week, just a few days ago. Pat graduated from Newburyport High School in nineteen sixty-four. She worked for the former Newburyport redevelopment agency. She was the secretary to Mayor Byron Matthews, who served in the sixties and seventies. She was an assistant to George Lawler when he was city clerk. He was a one-time mayor. She may not have been the first woman to serve on the city council, but she definitely was a rarity. She served two years in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-three for Ward Five. Her dad, Vin Conley, was chair of the zoning board of appeals in the nineteen eighties, I'm told. And, and Pat had worked at the institution for savings for almost forty years when she died last week. She was a very active volunteer on local boards and charities. She got the Paul Harris Fellow Award from Newburyport Rotary Club in two thousand and eighteen, and just last year, she got Peace Prize Award from our Human Rights Commission. Please have a moment of silence to remember Pat Connolly. Thank you. If we could call the roll, please. Clerk Jones.
Be happy to, Mr. President. Counselor Tantar?
Present.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Here.
Counselor Zee?
Here.
Counselor Devlin?
Here.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Present.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor Shan?
Present.
Council President Agarman?
Here.
We have eleven present, Mr. President.
All right. How about late filed items?
There are three. There's a Communication Two Fifty, which is to be taken up in the regular agenda. Ordinance Fifty-One, Regarding Fences, which is part of the Planning and Development Committee. It just was not in the packet. And Communication Two Forty-nine, which is actually in Communications in the Consent Agenda. However, the backside of each page was not included in the scan. It is now. Those are the three late files.
Okay. All right. We're going to go to public. I'm sorry.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? No, as opposed. Okay. So late files are in, and we can review them or work with them tonight. Now we'll go to public comment. The ground rules for public comment are a little weird because we have to do it by Zoom. So electronically, for those of you that are on Zoom, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And there's a command that allows you to do that. If you press your mouse over your name, and I'll call upon you. When I do, you each get two minutes. Please simply state your name and your home address, your home address. And I'll keep time and try to give you a heads-up when you're running into the end. So far, I see one hand up. So, no, there's two. Okay, here we go. So, bear with me. Let's start with Eco Health Associates. You're self-muted.
Okay. Eco Health Advocates. Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. Eco Health Advocates. Go right ahead. So name an address.
Thank you. Yes. My name is Jane Rascal. I live at fifty-one Woodland Street, and I'm the director of Eco Health Advocates. As you hopefully remember, I spoke at a city council meeting last month, encouraging you all to reconsider Newburyport's contract with mosquito control district. If you would allow me, I would like to update you on my proposal. After much research and collaboration, I've changed my tact and now hope to present to the Public Safety Committee a comprehensive, proactive mosquito-borne disease management plan for the city to most effectively and safely contain a possible threat of AgroVirus, with details to follow. This plan could stand alone or be implemented in partnership with the mosquito control district. In fact, it might be easier for the city to amend the current contract in order to adapt best practices to this updated policy if approved. Let's see what's possible. Hopefully, the Public Safety Committee will be pleased, and will send it to the full council for your review. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next is Thomas Getz.
Yes, my name is Thomas Getz. I live at thirty-six Broad Street. I'm also a member of Newburyport Human Rights Commission. I want to continue promoting Newburyport as a well and safe community for all visitors and residents. Perception, however, by others, may vary. A few years ago, I welcomed a work friend of mine for his first visit to Newburyport, lunch at Angie's. All went very well and was enjoyable. However, he later admitted to me that if he hadn't known that he would be meeting me, he would have felt uneasy coming to Newburyport as a black man. Subsequent to his first visit, he has frequently visited with his family. Perception is important. I support the resolution reaffirming support for racial equality, with Newburyport striving to be a welcoming city where all people can feel protected, included, secure, and safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jim Marks.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is James Marks. I reside at Eight Wild Rose Ave, Worcester, Mass. Oh, one, six, oh, two. I'm the business agent for Teamsters Local One Seventy. I represent administrative assistants, department heads, and parking control officers. I thought it was important today that I come on and speak with you briefly regarding the administrative assistance contract, which was in budget and finance a few weeks back. After listening to that, I thought there was a few things that could be clarified, that questions that were asked. So I thought I would do that today. I did give you guys a letter, which is Communications Two Four Eight in your packet, talking about some of the quick things I'm going to talk about now. But I just wanted to ask that you guys do approve the three-year contract that we negotiated with the city of Newburyport. It's been a long battle. It's been a year and a little over a year now since we got to this point. We came to an agreement back in the end of February, and then unfortunately, you know, worst-case scenario hit us, the pandemic, COVID-nineteen, which none of us would have ever imagined. So as everybody kind of got settled, and, and, you know, everybody tried to resume business as normal, we thought it was important to get this in front of you, to get it approved, and get the administrative assistance, the contract that was negotiated, and some increases in wages that they deserve for the job they do for the city of Newburyport. After discussions we're reaching with the MOA, the mayor brought up some concerns that we didn't, we don't know what the financial stability of the city will be in the future. And she had some concerns regarding a three-year contract. I agreed at that time that I would do a side letter, giving her the ability to reopen the contract for wages. But then we realized that it wasn't necessary. And I just want to point out one thing in the contract real quick. If you had a contract and you were looking at it at page twenty-three, it's article, it's for funding, the article that says funding, and it says, "All cost items contained in this agreement are subject to the annual appropriation process. In each year, the employer shall determine when sufficient funds have been appropriated to implement the cost items contained in this agreement. If not, the cost items will be subject to further bargaining between the parties." So with that language in the contract, it gives the city the ability, if the financial stability of Newburyport in the future, due to funding from the state or the federal government is in question, that you will be able to come back to the Teamsters and say, "Listen, we need to reopen this and talk about the wages at that time." So with the article-
Can you wrap up?
Absolutely. So with the article that's in the contract, I feel, I feel pretty confident that if something happens, we can move forward and reopen the contract. So I ask you guys to consider approving this contract tonight and doing it for the three-year term. Thank you once again for giving me the opportunity. Have a great night.
Thank you. And thanks to your dog. Trish Boateng. Let's see. Ms. Boateng, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Hi, my name-
Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Trish Boateng, and my home address is eighteen Merrill Street. I'm currently serving as a part-time support coordinator for youth services, helping meet the needs of Newburyport residents affected by the COVID-nineteen pandemic by connecting them with local social service providers and helping them access information, resources, and supports. Tonight, I wanted to express our immense gratitude to the Newburyport PTO for their partnership in helping Newburyport residents and families during this crisis. They have generously offered ten thousand dollars to youth services so that we are able to help more families in our city affected by COVID-nineteen. You'll be voting on an order to accept their gift tonight. With their partnership, we will be able to help more Newburyport families. We will be able to provide more gift cards to families for food and diapers, as well as help with costs of needed medication, summer clothing and shoes for kids, help with emergency assistance items such as utility bills or other barriers for families. We are so grateful for their partnership and for their dedication to Newburyport youth and families. We thank you.
Thank you very much. That's everyone who had raised his or her hand. But I want to give the last call if there's anyone else out there in the attendees, going once, going twice. So that's going to conclude public comment tonight. Now we're on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening, Mr. President, consists of the following. The approval of the minutes for the May twenty-second and June eighth meetings. There were two communications. I should mention that not only in the consent agenda, we show where they're going, they should have, they should have shown Budget and Finance Committee for the three items that are missing, if you will. Communication Two Forty-eight, letter from Jim Marks, you just heard about, Budget and Finance. Communication Two Forty-nine, Green Belt Artichoke Project, Budget and Finance. Transfer Eighty-Three, Solid Waste Revolving Fund, twenty thousand, to Solid Waste Same Amount, S U S, to Budget and Finance. Following in the first reading of appointments. Appointment One Eighty, Paula Esti, Three Pine Street, to the Cultural Commission until six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. Appointment One Eighty-One, Diana Carey, Thirty-three Temple Street, to the same commission until seven-fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Appointment One Eighty-two, Richard A. Eaton, for Horton Street, to the Newburyport Trust Fund, until seven-fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Appointment One Eighty-three, Ryan Kelly, Twenty-four School Street, Byfield, to the same cultural commission until seven-fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three. The following items are removed from their respective committees. Budget and Finance, that's meanings with the vote to approve the consent agenda. Budget and Finance, Transfer Seventy, Transfer Eighty-One, Transfer Eighty-Two, Orders One Eighty-Two, One Eighty-Three, and One Eighty-Six, from Planning and Development Committee, Order One Eighty-Eight. Public Utilities, the following three orders, Orders One Eighty-Four, One Eighty-Five, and One Eighty-Six. And with those removals and the following items, transfers, communications, and approvals, and, and the first reading of appointments, that concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
What is the will of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to amend to, to take out Two Forty-eight and Two Forty-nine to deal with, with the okay of the president and perhaps the chair. Once we go through Budget and Finances, those are both related to items and may end up making more sense to receive and file in the end, since we'll be discussing those tonight actively.
Okay. Well, let's, okay. So I'm sorry, the motion is changed to receive and file?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And you got a second from Counselor Tantar. Any discussion on that point? All those in favor of that, well, hold on a second. Yes, all those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
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 Are any opposed? I'm sorry. None are opposed. Go ahead.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Unanimous. That's, that's approved on to the regular agenda.
Second reading of appointments, Mr. President?
Mayor's update?
Yes, we received the mayor's update by email, so-
Motion or send and file?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's, that's received and filed. The mayor is on a very rare vacation, as many of you know, so she's not available tonight. Second reading, appointments.
Second reading is of Appointment One Seventy-Nine, Mia Yen, Six Woodman Way, Unit Two-O-Two, to the Cultural Commission until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, no, no, it's a roll call.
Roll call, Mr. President.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Eleven yes on that appointment.
Okay, so the two communications, we amended the consent agenda to send them received and filed. So it doesn't look like there's anything under Communications. We're on to orders.
Mr. President, there is Communication Two Fifty, which is the late file.
I beg your pardon. Remind me which one that is.
That would be the first and second letter from the Maqwan Lane residents.
That's right. What's the will of the council?
Can I make a motion to refer that to, well, we haven't done it yet, but maybe to Public Safety, where we discuss a resolution further coming up. So a motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Any discussion on the referral? Not seeing any. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's referred to Public Safety. Next item.
Next item looks like it would be Order, double check here, Order One Eighty-Nine, which is the Resolution on Newburyport Public Schools, submitted jointly, Counselors Connell, Khan, and Zee. What would you like me to read through it, Mr. President?
No, just what's the gist, just maybe the very bottom?
And the very bottom is after a number, whereas, as it say now, "Be it resolved that we request the state guarantee every school district full reimbursement for COVID-nineteen-related expenses and that are required to follow state mandates. There should be no unfunded mandates," that's in bold. "We request all COVID-nineteen reopening guidelines to be issued no later than forty-five days prior to the start of the school year, and the clerk is instructed to submit the copy to various state officials."
I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, motion to waive the rules and approve on first reading?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to dovetail on an emergency preamble. The exigency is that school year, believe it or not, will be here before we know it, and it would be nice if we could do it tonight. So however, that's phrased best between the two of us. Hopefully we can get it.
Okay. Well, I, I think the motion that's in order is one for an emergency preamble. Wait, no, yes, emergency preamble. It's not an ordinance, so we can approve it in one night. That's fine. But it's the charter that doesn't let us act on things the same night something comes in. So, Clerk Jones, if you could maybe just inform the public what the preamble is, and then we can have a separate roll call on that?
Yeah, my, my, I have written in my notes here that, was it Counselor Zee seconded by Counselor Khan?
Yes.
That's the way I heard it.
That have made a motion to enact an emergency preamble on Order One Eighty-Nine, such that there's an emergency that exists due to time being of the essence because of COVID and the start, imminent start, and planning for the start of the school year. Simple as that.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion amongst the councilors on the
emergency preamble before we go to roll call? Seeing none, why don't we go to roll call?
Roll call on the emergency preamble. Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yep, yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes. Okay, how about a motion to approve from someone?
Yeah, motion. Yeah, so second.
Okay, so it's moved by Counselor Zee, and the second is by Counselor Khan. Counselor Zee?
Yeah, just as, as one of the sponsors and the others could speak as well. But I just wanted to let folks know the origin of this. In our last Ed Committee meeting, we had a nice meeting, and then School Committee was, had, has now passed a similar resolution. So myself and the other two sponsors thought it'd be good, frankly, if the council could pile on and try and, try and encourage the state, frankly, to, you know, do a number of things. But one is to get, get back to us sooner rather than later on the fall. There's been some, some new stuff that's come out, and then also to prioritize, you know, Chapter Ninety funding, and that if there are going to be mandates, that sort of the municipality doesn't get left without any support. So that's why I think if I could summarize for my colleagues why we put it in, and the chair could probably summarize the, the rest of the meeting a little bit better than I could.
Further discussion or debate? Not hearing any. Since we did a roll call on the emergency preamble, which needed a two-thirds, I think we can do this on voice vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
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 Or any opposed? I count that as unanimous. On the next two items, Clerk Jones, why don't you read them together? Because I think the sponsors want to handle them together after all.
Yeah, Order One Ninety, it first comes with an emergency preamble, which, the essence of which says, "An emergency exists due to the actions of the Minneapolis police officer and the death of George Floyd, and the desire of the city of Newburyport to reaffirm the commitments of the city of Newburyport. Therefore, an emergency exists in order for said measure to be enacted at its first introduction," that's jointly submitted, Counselors Devlin, Khan, Lane, and Shan. And that goes hand in hand with Order One Ninety, which follows in the packet, a resolution reaffirming the support of racial equality, again, submitted jointly by those four counselors, in pertinent part, which states, "The city of Newburyport strives to be a welcoming committee where all people can feel protected, included, secure, and safe." I'm jumping back and forth. "It's a policy of the city of Newburyport to uphold the human rights of all persons, regardless of race, color, religious, creed, national origin, immigration status, sex, age, ancestry, sexual orientation, gender, identity, and expression, marital, family, or military status, and source of income or disability." I'll go right to, "Now therefore, be it resolved, city council will work with the Newburyport Police Department alongside community leaders and advocates to understand the steps that have to be taken and can be taken to provide effective public safety while ensuring accountability, not only to the city council and the mayor's office, but to the public as a whole and the community of Newburyport. And therefore, be it resolved that we, as members of the Newburyport City Council, will continue to support and further racial equality in the city of Newburyport through the orders and ordinances that are undertaken, submitted again by those four counselors." And I think that's the gist of it, Mr. President.
Motion to refer to Public Safety and Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Okay.
Information?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we have an emergency preamble? Are you referring the emergency preamble to Public Safety as well?
Yes, I might as well refer both items jointly.
Okay.
Confused. Sorry.
If I might, Mr. President, the emergency preamble probably would not be in order if it goes to committee?
Yeah, that, that's right. Again, it's mooted, but it's okay to send them both. It's just, it's just paperwork. The concept is, rather than adopting it as an emergency basis tonight, my understanding is the motion, which just one of the sponsors told me was coming, was to send it to Committee of the Whole and Public Safety. So I apologize for the confusion of the public. The emergency preamble is mooted. And then I've got three hands up. So I'll start in order with Counselor Lane.
Thank you. I just, I have a few thoughts around this. I wanted to express them right now, rather than wait till we get to where this lands. Regarding this resolution, I would like to add a few of my comments as to how I feel this resolution can be a catalyst to making our city a better place. Presently, there's a lot of anger and a lot of fear by many. There is also those who think that a line has been drawn in the sand, and that unclear messaging has been made by many people. I feel that rather than focusing on things we cannot control, I would ask that we focus on this one question. What can we do to make our community better as a whole that will take into account the needs and safety of both our residents and our police department? The need, the needs and support for everyone in our community should be paramount to our focus. I have been in the shoes of the police, and I feel their pain right now. I have also seen racism firsthand, and I applaud anyone who stands up for others to do what is right. I feel their pain right now as well. It is possible and important that all of us should work together and work hard to come to a solution. I have seen the effects of not having regular mental health for first responders. Having gone through some major traumatic calls personally, I cannot express the importance of this, and I, and not just after critical incidents either. The availability of counseling on a regular basis for police and firefighters would have a resounding effect on how we are as a whole, as well as protect us better. I feel this is an opportunity for growth in our city and to be better all around. The very spirit of this resolution is intended to bring unity and understanding, not divisiveness, which only sends us backward. My intent is not to defund the police, where that phrase does not mean what it says, and requires an explanation to be understood. Some changes do need to happen. I feel for everyone who is involved in the incident, in, in the incident recently to our city. And I ask that we, as a community, learn from this, and as we had planned on with this resolution prior to the events that occurred over just this past weekend. We can learn how to strengthen and bolster our home, and in order to maintain the highest standards possible. I'm very proud of my hometown. I try hard to look at how I can better myself in all aspects of my life. I feel as a city, we can do the same without hate, violence, or blame casting all around. I see many pledges out there online and petitions calling for reform and dedication to action. I also see many things thrown out there with no solution. I pledge to all the residents to do so, do whatever I can as a legislator, as well as a citizen and neighbor, to ensure the- neighbor, to ensure the equality of all who are oppressed, and with every action I perform as a counselor and as a human. As the birthplace of Garrison the Liberator, I would expect nothing less than to be a unified community in doing what is right for all who are feeling hurt and oppressed, and being better. In closing, I'll leave you with this quote from Garrison himself that still rings true today. "Our country is the world; our countrymen are all mankind. We love the land of our nativity only as we love all other lands. The interests, rights, and liberties of American citizens are no more clear to us than those of the whole human race. Hence, we can allow no appeal to patriotism to revenge any national insult or injury." And that's from the Declaration of Sentiments, the Boston Peace Conference, the 28th of September, 1838. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I gave some leeway to one of the sponsors. Again, the motion is to refer. So if people could tailor their comments, all the sentiments are well taken and given attention in our country. There's nothing inappropriate by the statement. I don't mean to imply that. I just want to keep things moving. Counselor Tontar.
I really have another point of order. Is it okay at this point to offer an amendment to the order? Would that be out of order?
Well, I
We already have a motion.
Yeah, I think we already have a motion to refer. It's not a motion to approve. I do invite the counselor, if it's going to go to committee, absolutely amendments are in order there. And it looks like it's going to be committee of the whole. So when we get a chance, if this passes, we'll talk to Chair McCauley about how soon a meeting can be held.
Okay. I'll hold off then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers? I'm not seeing any other speakers. So again, the motion is to refer to public safety and committee of the whole, so that we can all participate. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, none are opposed. So when we get to the committee reports for public safety, we'll work on our schedules and make sure we can coordinate. Clerk Jones, next item.
It would be Order 191, submitted by Counselor Z. Paraphrasing, "City already accepted relevant portions of Chapter 95, Acts of 2020, meaning Newburyport's home rule, an act to dissolve the Newburyport redevelopment authority and transfer its funds." Paragraph, "All revenue from the meters collected from the former NRA lots, so-called East and West, shall be deposited into this fund." Paragraph, "This fund, upon recommendation of the mayor and approval of the City Council, shall be used solely for the purposes of design, construction, maintenance, and operation of the extended waterfront park and related infrastructure." Goes on to say, "All proceeds from the dissolution of the redevelopment authority transferred into the waterfront aid parking fund." Forthwith, again submitted, Counselor Z.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Again.
Any discussion on the referral? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's referred. Next.
Order 192, which is from the Newburyport Parent Teacher Association organization, excuse me, in the amount of $10,000, the purpose of which is the partnership with the Newburyport Youth Services to support Newburyport families that have been impacted by COVID-19. The gift is accepted in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53A. Counselor Tontar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Counselor Z, well, first of all, the moving Counselor Tontar has the privilege of speaking first. But if he wants to pass, Counselor Z is next?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Z.
I just wanted to ask if there was a time constraint or consideration on this, since it is for relief from COVID. I don't know if, you know, if it's worth considering accepting the gift tonight. I mean, both parties are pretty well-known to the city, and it sounds like the program's already in effect. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, but maybe the Chair knows better than I on the exigency or the speed with which.
Well, let me, it's a good question. And we don't meet again until July 13th. It's just two weeks away. So let me recognize NYF Director Andy Egmont. You're on.
Hi there.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Counselor Z. I was hoping that someone may ask that question. Our biggest need right now is the fact that the school lunch program ended a week and almost two weeks ago now. And that is probably the largest need that we're seeing is for access to food and funds for other, you know, other necessities. So I would be very pleased to see the council accept it tonight, so that we are able to access those funds as soon as possible.
So Director Egmont, if we don't approve it tonight, just logistically, we don't have any other money to start spending on food, right? So we need to do this tonight?
We, when COVID first started, we had put out a request to what we now have as a list of our good neighbors. And that, those funds, I believe we have like less than $300 left. So we
So we're out of funds.
Yep, you got it.
So I'd make a motion for an emergency preamble. I think the clerk is, as always, good can wordsmith that together into an emergency, that the importance of
But, okay, let me recognize Counselor Tontar, though. He has his hand up.
Yeah, I'm gonna withdraw my motion to refer to budget and finance.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume that Counselor Z was making a motion for emergency preamble. How about a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, and then, anyone want to speak on the emergency preamble? No. And I think Clerk Jones already explained emergency preamble fairly recently, so let's put a roll call on that.
We have the emergency preamble for Order 192. Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counsel President Agaman.
Yes. And then, how about a motion approved?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tontar moved, and Khan seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that money is released. Clerk Jones, why don't you read the next two items, both gifts regarding a fence together?
Yeah, they certainly go together. The first is Order 193, which is from the Institution for Savings. There's a $5,000 gift to replace the fence located at State Street Municipal Parking Lot and associated murals to be commissioned and attached to the fence panels. That's submitted by Counselor Tontar. That goes hand in hand with the next Order 194, the Mary Alice, our Canadian Foundation, same amount, $5,000. The purpose is the same. And that's all submitted by Counselor Tontar.
Oh, sorry. Okay, is there a second on the motion to refer? I'm sorry, refer where?
Budget and finance.
I can Okay, discussion. Yeah, well, hold on, hold on. Let's go to the sponsor. So Counselor Tontar.
Yeah, I
Whoop, he's still there.
Yeah, trying to lower my hand. Now you can hear me. Yeah, I would prefer if we referred to this, both collectively, the planning and development. And I realize that gifts ordinarily go to budget and finance. However, I mean, there is a fence ordinance before the Planning and Development Committee. This is being shepherded by the Planning Department. It actually relates to a fence between a parking lot and a piece of private property. So I thought that, and it also includes an aesthetic sense in terms of the murals. And I thought that Planning and Development would be a more appropriate place for it.
I'll withdraw.
Me too. It's my second.
Okay, how about a new motion from someone? And then I'll go to Counselor Connell.
Motion to refer to Planning and Development. Collectively, the two of them.
Second.
Okay, so Counselor Tontar seconded. It's going to go to those two committees. That's the motion. Counselor Connell.
Yeah, I just might want to point out that the renderings, as they were presented, I kind of scratched my head over until I consulted with our artist and residents in the clerk's office, who explained that these are sketches. Don't intend to represent anything similar to the final representations that may end up on these panels. And knowing the reputation of the artist who has been asked to develop them, I think that I'd feel very confident that they're going to turn out tastefully, and in a manner that would meet with the approval of the general public.
Thank you. Counselor Khan.
Yes, Council President, I just wanted to clarify, it's going to one committee, right? But two items are going to Planning and Development. Just wanted to clarify.
No, actually, actually, it's going to go to both jointly. So that's the motions, I understood it. Is that correct, Counselor Z? Yeah, it's going to, both are going to both.
Okay, thank you for clarifying then.
Okay, any further, any further discussion on both going to both?
So I think the motion just needs to be revised, because we withdrew the budget and finance one. So jointly going, I think, is what we just need to say.
Mr. President, I had both Orders 193 and 194 going to just Planning and Development. Am I wrong?
I think you are. I think I defer to the two motioning councilors, but I thought that's what Counselor Tontar had said. Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, both motions referred collectively to Planning and Development.
Yep. So does everyone, yeah, so does everyone understand it's going to go, both are going to both Planning and Development and Budget and Finance? Any further discussion on that?
Only to Planning and Development, only Planning and Development.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Right.
No Budget and Finance.
No Budget.
That's what Counselor Tontar just said. Okay, I stand corrected. I misunderstood. So it's, well, they're only going to Planning and Development. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Plummer Spring Road.
This is Order 195, which is an agreement by, between the city and the town of West Newbury, regarding the allocation of cost for evaluation, design, and repair of the Plummer Spring Road Middle Street Bridge. It goes on for a number of pages, Mr. President. I'm sure you would not wish me to read it.
No, I certainly do not. Any motions on this one?
Motion to refer to
Who wants it?
Planning and Development again?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Khan. Counselor Tontar?
I've just, there is not a sponsor for this, is there? That I could find.
I don't know. I don't know. Is there, I didn't, okay, well, then, we need one. Anybody want it?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll sponsor.
Did you want to sponsor it too?
Well, Counselor Lane, is it in Ward Six? Where is it?
It is, yes.
Okay, so why don't we, is it okay if we let Counselor Lane do it with Counselor Connell jointly? How about that?
Beautiful.
Second. All right, Clerk Jones, who's, let the record show. So it is now jointly sponsored by those two, and Counselor Connell wishes to speak. Go ahead.
I would just ask the clerk, for the purposes of the consuming public, to summarize the cost sharing as it's expressed in this agreement, because I think that's the nut of it all.
I see cost sharing reads as follows, which is paragraph number two. "Newburyport and West Newbury mutually agree that they share equal responsibility for all aspects of the project, including the cost of evaluation, design, scheduling, oversight, etc. To the extent that work is not undertaken by the employees of Newburyport or West Newbury, all of whose costs and expenses shall be paid by their respective employers. To that end, Newburyport and West Newbury shall obtain the authorization of the other prior to incurring such costs. Cost sharing shall pertain solely to work directly related to the bridge project and shall be subject to appropriation. Estimated bridge project cost is contained in Appendix A."
Thank you. I think that covers it.
Counselor Wallace?
I would recommend that this go to Neighborhood and City Services, because it is a public works project, and would fall under that category. Would be my recommendation.
I have no objection.
Clerk Jones, I don't remember who made the motion, so you got to help me out here.
Yeah, so I have, I have now a suggestion that goes to Neighborhood and City Services. I have two sponsoring councilors, Lane and Connell, and I frankly do not have
I was the
I'm sorry, I have Counselor Z seconded by Counselor Khan, as long as they agree where it's going.
I don't have any objection if we want to change to Neighborhood and City Services.
It's fine with me.
Okay. All right, because I messed up the last one, make sure I have it straight. It's going solely to Neighborhood and City Services, right?
What I have, Mr. President, is referring
All right, any, yeah, okay. Any further discussion on solely going Neighborhood and City Services? Not seeing any. Oh, go ahead. Yes?
Just one thing, it does refer to Appendix A in what the clerk just read, but there is no Appendix A unless I missed it. So if we could get a copy of that, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, will do.
That's the estimated cost, so be nice to see it.
Okay.
Might have been the note we're voting on. Yes. All those in favor referring solely
to Neighborhood and City Service, please say aye.
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 Any opposed to that? No, it's gone. We have fought our way through orders, and we are on to ordinances.
Sorry. So we have Ordinance 48, which is Clarifying Membership Powers and Duties of the Newburyport Historic Commission, second reading. It is three pages long, jointly submitted, Councilors Connell, Agaman, and Shan.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Roll call for second reading of Ordinance 48. Counselor Tontar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Wallace.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
Yes.
Counselor McCauley.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Agaman.
Yes.
11-0, Ordinance 48 is approved on second reading.
Thank you. Ordinance 59.
Ordinance 59 reads, "The ordinance to establish posted commercial truck routes and for petitioning mass dot to allow further regulation, it is submitted by Counselor Agaman."
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's referred. Thank you. Committee reports, yes. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Economic Development, suggestion of Counselor Tontar, we're going to do a debriefing tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And we've invited key staff. And the debriefing is about the trial closures that we did. We did two sets of four nights, people may recall. The last one was just last night. So participants are going to include who are confirmed. Counselor McCauley is going to join us from public safety. Jamie Tucolo is going to be on from DPS. Clerk Jones is going to be on from the Parking Clerk. I haven't heard from Frank Jack Maloney or the Police Department yet, but I do know the Fire Chief is not going to attend. He sent an email. He doesn't have anything really to add. Didn't have any incidents for additional calls. So I hope people will participate if they wish. It's not committee of the whole, I recognize, but we can take one more counselor and not break our It's not committee in the whole, I recognize, but we can take one more counselor and not break our quorum. Budget and Finance.
A motion to approve Transfer 81.
Second.
I think that's the first one that was listed. So this is, oh. Am I recognized as one, Mr. President?
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
So this is the contract that was referred to earlier by Mr. Marks, the business agent for Local 170. As he noted, it was largely negotiated before the COVID outbreak. But it was, completing it was put off during the pandemic, total closure, and it's now deemed by the administration appropriate to move forward. It's an agreement that for Local 170 that covers department heads, professional administrative and technical employees, and also part-time parking enforcement. You've heard Mr. Marks earlier, and also we had a communication from Mr. Marks that is also before us, and we should probably deal with that after we vote on this. The first year is retroactive, that is, it goes into effect beginning of fiscal year 20, July 1st, 2020, shoot, 2019, get that straight. And as noted before, we had discussion in committee as to whether or not it was appropriate for us to approve a three-year contract, given the uncertainty of the state's finances and our own finances. The majority of the committee, and it was two to one vote to recommend approval coming out of committee, two of us thought that Article 17 in the contract, which Mr. Marks quoted, I could quote it again, was sufficient to back up if financial exigencies existed. So we thought that was okay. I want to note that Chief of Staff Coogan gave a detailed synopsis of all the changes in the contract and provided rationale to the committee for the changes.
Thank you. Counselor Z?
Yeah, it was the dissenting vote, and I just, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that went into it. I just, I really think that it's kind of unfair to set things up in a way that we're heading towards telling the taxpayers that they're going to have to pay the full boat this year in terms of increases, and we're kind of just moving forward on these contracts. It's very regrettable, in my opinion, that these three-year deals keep taking, you know, more than a year from the date that they last expired. This isn't the first one we've seen in the last couple of months. All I asked for was, could we put this off for a couple of months until we get into that, you know, the remaining nine-month budget? I don't think the contract is by any means offensive. There's anything wrong with it, or even that the raises in it are inappropriate or overly high. It's just a question of timing. And obviously, I was not successful in committee convincing my colleagues, but that was essentially the heart of my argument. And I would, you know, in defense of my position, wanted to make those comments tonight for your consideration as well. And, you know, again, I think we're all anxiously waiting for, you know, around August 15th to get this nine-month other budget to go to the full, to make it the full 12. And I think that'd be an appropriate time to take something up. And last thing is that I understand, you know, Article 17 of the contract, and yes, I do think that that's helpful to some degree. But typically, when we budget, and many of us have been through many budgets, we look at the contract lines as immovable objects and that we need to meet those obligations, and as we should. If we promise we're going to do something, then we should be equipped and prepared to do it. And to that same end, I just think that, you know, it'd be sensible to do this in concert with the remainder of the annual budget. So that's my rationale. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate? I'm not seeing any. Let's, so we have a motion and a second. Clerk Jones, how about a roll call?
Roll call for approval of Transfer 81. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Argument?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Chair.
So we have Communication 248 that we took out of the consent agenda. Can we move to receive and file that?
I think we did.
I thought actually, I think we did actually amend it to receive and file. Do I have that right?
Yes.
We did, yeah. So we're all set on that one, Counsel.
We don't have to, okay, thank you. Motion to approve Transfer 70, which is, which was originally was $25,000 to library maintenance equipment, $25,000. It was amended in committee, however.
Second.
All right, so the motion is made to approve and seconded by Counselor Con. Chair Tontar, please explain.
Yeah, the amendment was originally, the transfer was for 25K, Director Stevens, the library director, looking at the project and looking at the finances at the end of the year, indicated to us that she thought a transfer of $12,000 would be sufficient. And so we, in committee, we amended the 25K to $12,000. I think that's in the packet. The source of the funding is surplus in the library staff account as a result of the shutdown. In, and I could give detail on the budget line, but there's sufficient to cover this. The money is for HVAC and repairs and HVAC control. In committee, we just asked a number of questions on HVAC system, the age of it. It is deemed by the library's consultant on HVAC that it still makes sense to continue to repair this than a total replacement at this point. But we may be moving a couple of years to a point where a replacement would be warranted. So by three zero vote, we recommended approval as amended.
Thank you. Further debate? I'm not seeing any. Oh, look, Counselor Connell.
Not debate so much as a comment on this item. I had met with the library director. I'm saying it was October, November of last year, about this very issue. And she pointed out how they're limping along with what they have now. And I don't think it should escape anybody's view that we are looking at a more substantial upgrade and replacement of some of these items, which are reaching the end of their useful life in the next year or so. And I don't know what or so means quite yet, nor can anybody define that for me. But I do commend the library director for being proactive and patching together this system and being flexible about how much she really does need at this specific time. But let's not forget that we have a bigger bill coming, and we have to face up to it. It's an essential resource, this library and the HVAC system in an old building, even though it's been renovated fairly recently, 20 years ago, needs our attention. That's all.
Counselor Z?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond because we did talk a little bit about that in committee. And, you know, I would just note that, you know, the, I share the concern. I will also say that, you know, the library HVAC, I don't believe in, unless my memory, you know, is not serving correctly. I'm trying to pull it up as fast as we can here. But the CIP doesn't really reflect, I think, the severity of the challenges we may have there. There's only one item. There's $80,000 in FY '25 for a boiler at the library, which is five, six years away now, depending on when it goes. But we spent some time on this with Mike Bartlett as well, the facilities manager. So I just want to say I share the concern, and I hope that, you know, maybe next year when we do the CIP again, it needs another look to see if we're really, you know, kind of accurately tracking what the real needs are going to be down there. Because it does seem like it's getting, not quite to duct tape and bubble gum stage, but getting there.
But it is a moving target, correct?
Further discussion, debate, comments? Not seeing any. All those in favor of this transfer, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That carries. Keep going.
A motion to approve Transfer 82, $12,800 from free cash to fire department hoses and fitting.
Second.
Second.
So the chief appeared before the Budget and Finance Committee. You know, the original thought was the hoses could make it longer. They, the fire department has a hose officer that regularly and routinely examines the hoses. He recommended that deterioration was a little more accelerated than anticipated. This is something that has to happen.
Other counselors? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries as well.
So we have Transfer 182, motion to approve revolving fund spending limit increase.
Second.
So, Mr. President, this comes out of committee with a two to one recommendation to approve. This, essentially, the maximum amount that can be spent during fiscal year '21, beginning on July 1st, '20, for the revolving funds established in the city ordinances for certain departments, boards, committees, agencies, et cetera, under Chapter 44 and Section 53E. The council has to set that limit. Last year, the, in fiscal year '19, at the end, we, originally, the council had set a maximum amount that could be taken out of the fund of $495,000, and we increased it to $525,000 for fiscal year '19. However, we didn't increase it at the time for fiscal year '20. The additional funds necessary, the increase is necessary. It's just the year '20 now, as the fiscal year is ending, for payroll, contractual services, excuse me, and to pay for program.
Thank you. Other counselors on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed?
No.
I hear one no. I think it's Counselor Z, no. So it's 10 to 1. Next.
Yes, a motion to approve Order 183. 183 is the revolving fund order. I just made reference to it under Chapter 44, Section 53E. We set a maximum that can be taken out of the revolving funds. It's, we've set the same amount.
Second.
This is set the same amount as last year. Oh, thank you. And with the exception of recreational services, which is increased.
It came out of committee with what vote?
Two to one.
Two to one, okay. Other counselors? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these amounts, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
So one from Counselor Z, so that's another 10 to 1, I think.
Yes, yep.
Yes, okay. Keep going, Counselor Tontar.
So we have removed Order 187, which is the Community Preservation Committee report and order that came in as a late file to the last meeting.
Yep.
And, Mr. President, I think we should go this, go through this one project at a time.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I will recommend approval, one project at a time, if that goes, is that okay with the, with the committee? First of all, I'd like to thank the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, Mike DeSet, and the committee as a whole for their, as usual, meticulous work on the proposal. I think we've grown used to the work that they do and appreciate it. The, we did have questioned them on the, on the total amount of monies available to be distributed. And those amounts, if I can get that up here, I can't. Were, first of all, the amount that's collected in the community preservation tax, essentially, an estimate that originally was for 33%, I believe, coming from the state. Ethan can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but it is now 11%, right? There is also a $225,000 addition to that fund, which is money that's going to be used, that is proposed to use for the auto choke project. And so at the end of the year, the, at the end of this payment, there will be a surplus left in the fund of about $89,000. And this coming into this process, there will be surplus of about $86,000. So with that as a background, so that covered, I would move that we approve Project 1, which is a $150,000 down payment as amended.
The. Your second?
Second.
Counselor Connell, I think, seconded. Go ahead.
All right, so the amendment, and I'm sorry, I'm looking for the amendment right now. I have it. So the amendment reads as follows, and the city clerk has this. Unused funds for this project and the associated approval may not be extended beyond June 30th, 2023, without a vote of the city council. So what Project 1 is, $150,000 in down payment assistance. It was last received funds in 2015. It received $75,000. It's about $12,000 less than that fund now. Proposed, it'll now, why more money? Well, for one thing, there are five new affordable housing units in line. There are three potential resales. And the Federal Housing Trust is recommending an increase in assistance from a total of $15,000 to $20,000. So therefore, if you have eight units of $20,000, right, then, of course, it's 160 plus I had 12, so this just about to cover it. We want to come back to the city council if they didn't spend it for whatever reason, and that's why we amended in committee.
Thank you.
Zero to recommend approval.
Thanks. Is there further discussion on the down payment assistance? I'm not seeing any. Clerk Jones? Normally, we do roll call for these, but it may be tiresome to do that 13 times for each item. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the counselors, if any counselor objects doing voice votes on these, please don't be shy. If you object, just let me know. Any objection? No, I think we're okay with voice votes. So on the motion to approve Project Number 1, as amended, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's 11, nothing. Project 2?
Motion to approve Project 2, this comes before you with a three zero positive vote from the counselors for $76,728 for the restoration of the 1930s Maxim fire truck. The fire chief came before us and spoke to the import of the fire truck, not only to the department but to the city. And we also note that the Newburyport Historical Society voted the vehicle is a historic resource to the city. So we recommend approval.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Second on that, please.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Okay, we better write that again. Sorry. All those in favor with the second, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Still 11 is it. Sorry, Clerk Jones, that's my fault.
No problem.
Project 3?
Motion to approve Project 3. Motion to approve project three, which is Newburyport Public Library Archival Center HVAC replacement.
Second.
Thank you.
As, as amended?
As amended, as amended.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
So first, first of all, let me indicate the amendment. The amendment is the city council approves this funding for project number three upon the following condition. The plans for the project shall be subject to review and comment, and construction shall be subject to oversight by the Newburyport Historical Commission. The project is for replacing two HVAC units in the archival center. There is a lot of support from the Newburyport Historical Society that says the, that indicates the archival center is a historic resource. The-
Oops, sorry, I keep trying to cut you off, keep going.
Yeah, we also received this afternoon a proposed language for a proposed amendment for, let's see, yeah, from, from the planning director. And so I will offer that as an amendment, if I can get a second. The amendment further that CPA funds identified in fiscal year twenty-one project three above Newburyport Public Library Archival Center HVAC may be released to the applicant prior to recording of the perpetual preservation restriction, PR, due to the city's direct ownership and control of the subject property. And on the condition that all construction work associated with this project be reviewed and approved by the Newburyport Historical Commission, NHC, prior to the start of work in order to ensure consistency with the terms of the pending PR.
Tell you what, why don't we do that? That's a motion to amend. And you have a second. Any discussion on the motion to amend that paragraph written by Director Port? Counselor Zed?
Yeah, I, I guess I just want it consistently. So we had already in the amendment struck prior to distribution of the fund, we had dealt with this. So I just, you know, whatever language needs to be, I don't have any philosophical issue with the amendment. It frankly does the same thing that the amendments that were already proposed and accepted seem to do, unless I'm missing something. So I guess, you know, we should, we just need to make sure everything's harmonized and makes sense. But it seems to me that the amendment that was passed in committee should, should, needs to be removed if this one's going to pass, so that, so that we just don't have stuff all over the place kind of thing.
Well, if I may, I, I think, I mean, I can turn also to the clerk, because he can advise us as an attorney, but I don't think there's any contradiction between the two. It does seem duplicative, but Counselor Jones, do you see any inconsistency between the language?
I have to analyze it further. I, I see the one sentence from what was submitted in the packet, which Counselor Tontar read, it shall be subject to the oversight of the Newburyport Historical-
But, but earlier up, we actually struck some language. There was a phrase, prior to distribution of the funds, that was stricken.
True. So I'd really have to analyze it. I assume that there's no conflict.
Okay, okay, I'm putting you on the spot, that's, that's good enough. I, Counselor Tontar has his hand up.
I certainly have both, and I guess the rule of law would be the more restrictive controls, correct?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So I think we're safe going forward.
Counselor Tontar?
Yeah, I mean, I too wondered whether it was necessary, because I'm not sure, maybe the planning director had not seen that, or not understood that that we had, that line through it meant that we had amended that as well. I just didn't mention it when I reviewed it. I don't see a conflict at all in it. I looked at it fairly closely. I don't, I think we can let both amendments stand.
Okay, Counselor, I'm sorry, Director Port has his hand up, let me allow him to talk. Director Port? You're on. Director Port, can't hear you. Okay, I can't hear you. Well, I'll leave him unmuted in case he can pop up, but further discussion before we vote on the amendment? So again, this is the amendment to add Director Port's language. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor of the- Go ahead, hello?
Hi, this is Andy, I apologize, I seem to be having some sort of a microphone issue.
Okay, go ahead, we can hear you now.
Thank you, I agree that there's no conflict in the language. I had, and I did actually notice that Counselor Zed had a overlapping amendment. I believe that the language I put forward could be done on its own, or if you wanted to include both, I agree there's no conflict there. We were both, I think, simultaneously trying to address a bunch of different issues in these orders of appropriation, myself, Counselor Zed, and a few others, to address some floor amendments. So I have no objection either way, I don't think it provides a conflict one way or the other, so if you want to include both, feel free.
Okay, thank you. Counselors, anything further on the amendment to add Director Port's language? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
The one, no, I heard one no.
Counselor Devon.
Counselor Devon says no, okay. So that's ten to one, the amendment now, as amended, the underlying motion is to approve as amended in committee. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Project four, my first-
A motion to approve.
Second.
This is for restoration of the Cobble Courtyard at Cushing House. We, we also have an amendment here from, from the planning director that I will put before you, if I can get a second. It states further, the CPA funds identified fiscal year twenty-one, project four above, Cushing House Cobble Courtyard, Phase Two, and for, and for fiscal year twenty, project four, Cushing House Electrical System, previously approved by the council in twenty nineteen for preservation of the subject property, may be released to the applicant prior to recording of the perpetual preservation restriction due to the extent ten-year preservation restriction that will remain in place until final Massachusetts Historical Commission approval of the perpetual preservation restriction.
There's a second.
Second.
Now I need, I need Director Port again. Tell me about the ten-year PR, because that, when I looked at this, I, I didn't find that. And also, I know that Chair, Chair Shand just had a hearing on this earlier tonight, so if Chair Shand or a member of that committee wants to speak, I don't want to cut you off. Okay, now, Director Port, go ahead.
So I'll speak, we did approve this perpetual preservation restriction tonight, and we did ask Andy about the preservation restriction that's held by the Mass Historic Society that doesn't expire for another seven years. So be it, so just so folks know that there is a preservation restriction in hand right now that is almost identical to what we passed tonight, and we'll go into those details once we get to the Planning and Development Committee.
This is Director Port, I agree with Counselor Shand, I apologize, I have the microphone issue I'm having, but I agree, and this language was intended to allow the Cushing House to perceive of some of their work, given that there is a temporary restriction that will be in place for years longer than it will take for Mass Historical to approve the final PR and have that recorded.
Okay, I just, just a question, because I, are we able to enforce the MHC restriction? The way, you know, the way that we just dealt with it at the library was to have our Historical Commission have oversight.
Sure, that's a fair enough point. We don't actually have direct control over that preservation restriction. If you wanted to add parallel language for, from the prior floor amendment to this particular project, that could perhaps cover it, so that could be with the addition of the wording and the condition that all construction work associated with this project be reviewed and approved by the Newburyport Historical Commission prior to the start of work.
Well, the problem though is that you can't, you can't do it prior, because they've already done the work, so I want to recognize Susan Edwards. Before I do, again, what we're trying to effect here is release of the money, I understand that, but, you know, so no one's trying to frustrate release of the money, but we're trying to follow our own rules. Museum Director Edwards, you are on.
Good evening. I would like to say that we would be happy to have input from the Newburyport Historical Commission, the work is ongoing, they have already seen the plans and specifications and approved those at a meeting in late February twenty twenty. However, if they want to have further involvement in, in the work, we would be happy to have them see it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so you have suggested language counselors from Director Port to, you know, import some of the language from what we did for the library? Does someone want to make a motion or not? No one wants to make a motion. Okay.
Mr. President, I had a motion to amend on the floor from Tontar and Counselor McCauley.
Right, but that was just the, the lines from Director Port, but they don't mention the Newburyport Historical Commission, so I was fishing for an amendment, yeah, but no one wants to do it. Okay.
I'll move that we have that language.
Second.
Just for consistency.
Thank you, and a second, and, okay, does everyone know what the language is that's being imported? It's identical to what was below for the library?
And so after the semicolon, it would, it would be and approved by the Newburyport Historical Commission, NHC, prior to the start of work, that's a problem, in order to ensure consistency with the terms of the pending PR.
Maybe just cut prior to the start of work, and you're all set.
Yeah. I'm just, yeah, I agree with that.
Who's the second on that?
Counselor Shand.
Counselor Shand, all right, any more discussion on this? Seeing none, all of us in favor, please say aye on the amendment that was just read by Counselor Tontar.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, now the underlying amendment that was read by Counselor Tontar. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. No, there's one no. Counselor Zed, I think, is no on the underlying, so that's it for project four?
Yes.
On to project five.
Do you need a motion to approve as amended?
Yes.
Yes, we do, we do, we do. Because this was a new amendment, Counselor Tontar, so we had to do two amendments on the floor, which we just did, now the underlying approval is it came out of committee last week, and I think you had made that motion seconded by-
Counselor Khan.
Counselor Khan. Any discussion on the underlying approval? None, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
No, okay, ten to one on that one, and I think we have finally scraped that one off our shoes, so we're on to five.
Motion to approve project five, which is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars into the open space fund.
Second.
So this comes out of committee with a three zero vote to recommend. The, the open space fund currently has seven hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars in it. Two hundred twenty-five K is proposed to, I think it's two hundred and nine, maybe two, yeah, two twenty-five is supposed to come out for the auto choke project, so, and this adds another hundred twenty-five, so net it will be a one hundred thousand dollar decrease to the open space fund, so it will end up closing at six hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars. And of course, these funds are available and have been used, for instance, the Colby Farm Project and others, and the, and the money's there, and of course, we would also have to vote as a council to approve it for a specific open space project.
Okay, further discussion on this project number five? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries eleven to nothing, project six.
So a motion to approve project six as amended.
Second.
So in committee, Counselor Zed offered an amendment, and we approved it, and so let me do that first. The, the project summary is stricken in its entirety and replaced with the following. This project is separated into three separate categories, categories, project six A, completing the cleanup and reopening the area behind the wastewater treatment facility, amount fifty thousand dollars. The city is moving forward on addressing the riverfront trail gap behind the wastewater treatment facility, part of Phase Two of the Clipper City Rail Trail Project. A contractor is currently mobilized to the site for the PCB cleanup of a portion of that corridor. Additional PCBs were unfortunately discovered during post excavation sampling and analysis, and the city is currently initiating a second phase of excavation, transport, and disposal. City council approves this funding for project number six A, upon the condition that it shall be dedicated solely to the completion of site cleanup and reopening of this segment of the trail for public use, even if on an unofficial basis. Project six B.
Counselor, I think the, all of the language, I just want to spare you some time, all of the language was in the packet, so you don't, you don't have to read every word, you can, you can paraphrase, I think it's okay, because the counselors have it and the public has it.
Okay, yeah, the public does have it, you're right.
Yeah, the public has it too.
So project six B is also for fifty thousand dollars, basically, this, this is dedicated for the improvement and completion of the segment along Parker Street in Newburyport. Project six C is for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and as, as it comes before you, it conditions the release of that hundred fifty thousand dollars to the reception of a one point five million dollar grant, of the MVP grant, or of, or of any other state or federal funding. And otherwise, the entire hundred fifty thousand dollars shall revert back to the CPA fund if the grant is not awarded by December thirty-first, twenty twenty. It also indicates that if needed sooner, some of the project's funds may be reallocated to project six A. So that allows some flexibility. Let me, let me just say, I'm going to offer another amendment to the already amended version. I amend that in, in point number one, which is indicates that an amount of no less of one point five million must be received, I would move to change that to one point three million. I have a second, so the second there is that the grant, the, the grant request is for one point seven four million, it has a twenty-five percent match, so, you know, the match would require four hundred thirty-five K from the city, and of course, that, that brings the, you know, the, the grant would only be for one point three approximately, so it's more appropriate that one point three to one point five.
Got it, and I'm, I'm sorry, who's the second?
I think it was Counselor Zed, wasn't it?
Okay, Counselor Zed, okay. Counselor Zed, do you want to speak on the amendment?
Sure, yeah, I, 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 in, I think it's, it's fine, the one point three is fine, I think the, the heart of philosophy is that we discussed that length in committee was, now how can we find a way to, to show our support, you know, to, to the granting authorities, but at the same time, give us some, 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 you know, some, some sort of bumpers on the bowling alley, so the money can come back to CPA if the grant funding doesn't come through? There are obviously questions- There are obviously questions in this, you know, environment financially, whether it'll come through or not. So I'm fine with the 1.3 and I was happy to second it.
Any other discussion on changing it to 1.3 from 1.5? All those in favor of the amendment alone, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, there it is as amended. So there's an underlying motion to approve Project Six as amended in committee and amended tonight. Any discussion on that?
You're talking about the whole thing as a whole?
Yep, Counselor Zied, go ahead.
Yeah, so just wanted to offer one other amendment too on 6B, which is that a final sentence be added that, you know, these funds shall be used within the confines of the city of Newburyport.
Okay.
So discussion on that discreet amendment? Seeing none, all of us in favor, Counselor Connell.
Yeah. On that amendment, I'm trying to understand the reasoning behind it.
Sure. May I respond, Mr. President?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, I think we had this debate at length a couple of years ago, but I think, you know, I was just speaking for myself as the motioner. I mean, I'd like to see the money get spent in Newburyport. We have plenty of work to do at the intersection of State and Parker before we expend funds to design, build, construct, do anything over the city line. I think we've been looking for a little bit of support from the town of Newbury and I believe that they would help. And at least at this juncture, there's more than enough to do in Newburyport. So I'm just asking for the money to stay in the city and not to creep up the street there and go over the town line.
Counselor, well, Tontar spoke already, so count back to Counselor Connell.
Yeah. Again, that means a portion of this rail trail will not be completed. The town of Newbury has already told us quite clearly, they've had two years, I believe it's two years since we voted on this previously, that they have no intention of paying for something that is essentially a Newburyport project serving Newburyport residents. And I scratched my head over this. I scratched my head over it the last time we approached this issue. The fact of the matter is, it was originally conceived and applied for grant funding to support a project managed and constructed with a small segment notwithstanding in the city of Newburyport. The majority of funding for this entire project has come from other places, not Newburyport. The funding of grants and that sort of thing. And the idea that we hold up a section of this for the purposes of making a point that it's in Newbury means that Newburyport residents who enjoy it now will not be able to enjoy it fully, nor as safely, because we're a bit belligerent, I would say overly parochial in our insistence upon funding from the town of Newbury, which never asked to be a party to this project, but many residents in Newbury very graciously allowed us easements to their property, as did many Newburyport residents, for it to go forward, seeing that there was a general public benefit that they could also use, but it was primarily to the benefit of the city of Newburyport and its residents. So I don't understand this parochialism. That's what it is. It's nothing other than parochialism. It's foolish. It's counterproductive. Let's get it done.
Okay, I'm gonna have to respond to those comments. So who's going to take over the gavel? I think the next person in seniority who doesn't have his hand up would be Counselor Vogel.
I'll take over the gavel if you insist.
Hold on, so let me make you a co-host.
This should be interesting.
Okay. Go ahead. You have the con.
So if I look at the, if I look at the order of the hands, I saw, if I just go from top to bottom, I saw Counselor Tontar and then Zied, Khan, and Devlin.
If I could just say, I've spoken on this. I'll hold off to Counsel Devlin hasn't spoken, Counsel Khan hasn't spoken. So I'll hold off.
All right, we'll go Devlin and Khan.
Well, don't forget Matt Coogan from staff also wants to speak. And I'm not able to raise my hand, so just put me on the list somewhere.
Okay, so let's go Devlin, Khan. Then we'll go to Matt.
If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, Counsel Khan had her hand up first. I'll yield to her.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes. Sorry, I guess I wasn't ready. But so we remember these conversations. I remember, I guess, maybe two years ago. But one of the things I just want to encourage as we're thinking about this and with that addition language, I am not in support of that because I do also share some of the sentiments expressed by the other at-large counselor. And I, obviously, I know everyone uses the rail trail and it is a section that I have, you know, learned now to navigate well by crossing the street. So I'm facing cars. But I do feel like this is an opportunity for us to once again be able to encourage some type of usage of the funds. And in spite of the section that is in West Newbury, I have many times brought that up and talked with some of the, at one of the MMA meetings. We actually sat at a table with some of the town, a select person from West Newbury. And I remembered the conversation about, sorry, Newbury, about this and them just kind of shrugging, saying it's never, if you expect it to come from our city, it never will. And so, you know, we are still going to try to keep conversations. But when I first heard that debate here on the floor, I thought, well, you know, it makes sense. But, you know, when can we maybe expect that or not rely on it, but at least make some outreach? And I think I asked administration to do that. And I've not seen any change in funds coming from that direction. So here we are again, two years later. And I know there's so many other aspects of the rail trail that we are now, you know, dealing with. But this is just one piece that I feel like it does, I just wish we can eliminate and not have that there. And I yield now to the other counselors. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna, so we'll go to Devlin, I, Ragman, Zied, Tontar, Matt. And when you take over again, Mr. President, I would like to speak as well. So Counsel Devlin.
Mr. Chair, I hate to do this to you again, but should we not hear from the mayor's office? Maybe it'll make some of this moot.
That's the will of the whole body. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the funding that's in the CPA request is for the Parker and State Street project. The scope of that work is entirely in the city of Newburyport within that intersection. So I don't want to stifle any debate that the council wants to have, but I just want to make that clear now.
Thank you. With that, Counsel Devlin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to ignore some of the pejoratives that were thrown against those of us who might have some different thoughts to how this money should be wisely spent. I would say that over the past four and a half years, I have heard countless residents who have said they want their own sidewalks and streets done before anything else is done. And the idea of having a perfectly circular and connected rail trail is, it's form over substance. And we have much more, I really kind of pretty agitated that the word foolish was used when discussing budgetary needs, especially in the time that we find ourselves in right now, where we are not having public park, part-time employees working and we're not sure what monies we're going to have for our budget for the next nine months. So I do not think this is foolish. I think the vast majority of residents would agree, let's take care of things in Newburyport first. But I, so, you know, this might be redundant, as we talked about earlier on motions from Director Port, but they passed anyway. Amendments that we got at 5:35 at night, so, tonight. So I don't know why we can't be redundant here. These monies aren't going towards that stretch of the road anyway. So thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ragman?
Yes, thank you. I did recall, as Matt Coogan said, that this segment has been designed because staff recognized that the city council have been explicit that we want to prioritize Newburyport property first. And as you also heard from Counselor-at-Large just now immediately before me, there are many of us who believe that there are higher priorities, including schools. I mean, we could just go on with the list. And it's always the rail trail. But, you know, the Counselor-at-Large who characterized the amendment as being foolish and parochial misstated several facts. So for one thing, none of the money would go to the Newbury segment. So the idea that we're holding something up by adding the amendment from the Ward One Counselor is just entirely untrue. Also, this is the second public meeting where I've heard the Counselor-at-Large who characterized the motion as foolish and parochial misstate that there were easements granted by residents of Newbury. There is no evidence of that whatsoever. None. I checked. So I'm tired of this. It isn't Ward Two. The most important thing, and we had consensus on it, was to get a crossing at State Street where a man was killed. So let's just adopt this amendment and move on. Thank you.
Counsel, I think Zied is next. Is your hand to serve? Yes.
I'll yield for the moment. Thank you.
I get Tontar?
Yeah, I do not support this amendment. I didn't support it when we voted on it last time. I, you know, I have heard from countless residents who don't understand why we would have a gap in the rail trail that is almost entirely to the benefit of Newburyport residents. Last year, when I went door-to-door campaigning, I got berated, all right? Because, you know, what's the matter with you people? Right? It's silly. And they use terms like that. And I think the at-large counsel who spoke first on this against the amendment was kind of reflecting some, I imagine, of what he heard. So I can't vote for it. First of all, secondly, we didn't discuss this in committee. It's irrelevant to this particular project funding. Whoops. Sorry. I'm done.
Counsel Ragman, do you want to take back the chair or do you wish to speak again? Counsel Ragman?
I'm not allowed to take it back.
Oh, how do I give it back to you?
So we're done, yeah, and so we're done with the motion. Sorry.
Okay, where do I, how do I take that? How do I speak?
There's two ways. You can pass the baton to yet another person or you can have a motion to waive the rules by two-thirds and have me take it back.
You can ask the will of the council for him to speak.
Does the will of the, will the will of the council allow me to speak?
Any opposed?
I don't have any objection myself.
No objection.
Thank you. If I could just take a moment, I was, is off. I share a lot of the sentiment also about, if you want to just label it simply completing the trail on that portion. I run that portion probably two, three times a week. It's dangerous. It is really sad that it's not completed. I understand all the needs of the community. Everybody understands the needs of the community. I understand Counselor from Ward Two's argument that we definitely need a safe crossing at the, that whole intersection. I think that's a top priority. I object to just putting in this language, saying, just reiterating unnecessarily the need that it only be spent in Newburyport. We're not talking about that now. All we're talking about is, was one particular item, it doesn't need to be in there. I don't think that we need to put it in there and then be able to refer to it somewhere down the line. Oh, but we already said that this needs to, you know, this only needs to be spent in Newburyport. I think we need to, at the first opportunity, when it's appropriate, get this trail done and complete it. I agree with the Counselor-at-Large. I hear it all the time about this, what are you guys doing? How come you don't fix this? It is a high priority amongst a lot of people. That's what I have to say. I think that I have it as Tontar still and Zied.
My mistake. I did lower my hand. Sorry.
Okay, then Counsel Zied.
Yeah, I, you know, I was going to go back and forth about whether respond, but, you know, it's, it just, it's a bit much to have to defend the council, you know, from a counselor making comments that the council is the problem with respect to the rail trail. And we hear this all the time, oh, it's our fault, the cleanup didn't happen or isn't happening fast enough. It's our fault that this is, that is happening and that's happening. And every two years, we have lengthy discussions about, you know, why can't my road be paved? And we all say, okay, yep, don't worry, it's going to be a big priority for us. So it's just a little bit, it's sad to me to have to defend against a member of our own bodies sort of denigrating the work that we do here and sort of saying that we're just, we're just wasting time and it's parochial and irrelevant almost. But I do think spending money in another community, even if it is a short span, is important. And if we don't get cooperation there, that's fine. Maybe at some point when we finish all the parts in Newburyport, which, by the way, I went to bat for my ward. That's why I wrote these amendments, so that the cleanup could finally be done, which I guess has also been stipulated several times to be the council's fault. I'm still not clear how that could possibly be true. But it's just aggravating to me and unfair. And the cleanup needs to be completed. And I think the council has moved deliberately and quickly through all things, turning almost everything around in, within two weeks. And I'd like to move the question.
Second.
Okay.
No debate.
That's correct. So we go right, you wish to go to a roll call?
Sure, we'll take a roll call and move in the question. Thank you.
Roll call and moving the question. Counsel Tontar?
No.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel Wallace?
No.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
No.
Counsel Elaine?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
No.
Counsel Shand?
No.
Counsel Ragman?
No.
Motion fails. So we have on the floor the motion to amend.
Point of order? Point of order? Was that, I got confused because once, once we actually did a motion to move the question by voice, did we do that or was that by roll call?
No, no, that was, that was the motion to move the question. It needed a two-thirds.
Okay, so I got confused. Okay, again, my apologies.
So I see Counsel, I see Counselors Wallace hasn't spoken on this.
Hi, thank you. I'm a little caught off guard by this. And I just, as a new counselor, you know, I was not involved with the history with the past couple of years. I just want to verify what Matt Coogan said. Is this discussion necessary for this piece right now? Or is this, I just want to verify it does not affect this section that we're looking at right now?
Matt, you want to, I'm sorry, Counsel.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead. Yes.
Matt, you want to just reiterate?
Yeah, the purpose of the request for funding was to go towards the Complete Streets project at State and Parker, which is part of the rail trail, which is essentially getting across State Street safely and to continue eventually with, through a masthead project around the rotary and then cross Route One again. So it's not, there's, no part of the area that's still in Newbury is part of that project's scope. So I guess I, that wasn't the intention of where this funding was going.
Correct. Is there a way we can just define the project limits for now and then have this discussion later on where we can be a little bit more prepared and perhaps, you know, have some numbers and figures and plans, et cetera?
If I may, Mr. Coogan, is that, is that necessary or is the language?
Is it, yes.
If I may, the project is posted. I believe there was a public meeting a few weeks ago. I believe their plan's posted on the planning development website that demarcate the area of work. I don't have, I don't have it in front of me at this moment, but it is documented.
Okay. So I guess what I'm saying is if it's very clear, I feel like this So I guess what I'm saying is if it's very clear, I feel like this discussion could happen later when we all have a little more time to prepare, or at least I feel like I would need more time to prepare. Thank you.
I'd like to speak again when it's my turn.
I think that the others have had opportunities to speak more than once. You go ahead, councillor.
Yes, the reason we're debating it is really because of the councillor-at-large's comments. You know, and it makes me suspicious. You know, it's funny, I would agree with Mr. Coogan. When I read the application, I didn't think there was any need to mention where the money was spent, Newbury or Newburyport, because staff had already put in their application that it would only be spent in Newburyport. But the attitude of some of the other, well, especially the one councillor who set this off, makes me think that I really can't trust staff, that if, that we have to add this language because the parochialism, which I'm accused, is going to be worked around in some way. And so I support the amendment.
I think that councillor Connell?
Yes, I withdraw my previous comments.
That leaves Mr. Tontar.
I just want to, in reference to the Ward 4 councillors' comments, the amended, amendment from Budget and Finance restricts how the funds can be used. $50,000 for PCB cleanup. And Project 6B, which I did not read, but was in the packet, specifically says, I'm going to read it now. "The city council approves this funding for project number 6B upon the condition that it shall be dedicated solely to the improvement of the dangerous State Street-Parker Street intersection, including a signalized crossing of State Street for pedestrians and bicyclists, an extension of the Clipper City Rail Trail approximately 500 feet along the novelly side of Parker Street." That is in Newburyport. "And for no other purposes." The amendment's unnecessary.
Seeing none, I think that what's on the floor, if I could, we're voting on the amendment, the language that, if I may, Mr. Clerk, if you would be so kind, what was that language?
We're voting on a motion to amend 6B to add the language that would say, "The funds used within the city of Newburyport, period." That was moved by councillor Zead, seconded by councillor Elaine. Would you think we should go to a roll call, Mr. President?
I would like to hear a roll call vote, please.
Okay, so for all, for all those, I hope it's clear, we're voting on just that sentence being amended, being added to project 6B. Councillor Tontar?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
No.
Councillor Wallace?
No.
Councillor Zead?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Elaine?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Connell?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Councillor Shan? Are you muted?
You're muted.
No.
And councillor Ragaman?
Yes.
So... Hold on, let me do some remedial math here. One, two, three. Am I, is anyone?
Six, five.
I see.
Six, five.
Thank you for the math. Motion passes.
Motion fails.
No, motion fails.
Fails.
We had six yeses, did we not?
No.
No.
Okay, let me review it. I'm sorry, councillor Wallace, were you a yes or a no?
I was a no.
And then motion fails. I'm sorry. Six, six no, five yes.
That's why we have engineers. They can count.
I tried to count you councillor Wallace twice, which threw me off.
Thank you. If you could bring us, if you could bring us back to the motion on the floor without the, that amendment?
Motion on the floor was to amend, it's a broad amendment, broad motion, it was to amend 6B as read in part by councillor Tontar.
No, can I correct you on that? The motion comes out of committee as amended.
True. I just wanted to say that we've also had an amendment that reduces the 1.5 to 1.3.
Right.
And then the next motion was to add that sentence that failed. And so we're back to the motion to approve as amended, correct?
As amended, yeah, approved as amended, yes.
Does anybody have any questions on what we're voting on? Hearing none, I'm comfortable with a voice vote.
Then all those in favor would be?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One no, councillor Zead. Motion passes, 10 yes, as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Vogel. I appreciate it.
Whatever it takes to hand this back to you, it's yours.
Okay, so we're on to project seven.
Motion to approve project seven as amended.
Second.
Thank you. The amendment indicates that funding is subject to other funding sources listed in the project summary also being approved, and that the city council be presented with all legal instruments, et cetera, before the funding is spent. The other funding sources, so the city has received an EOAA drinking water supply protection grant of $300,000. West Newbury Community Preservation Committee had recommended $175,000. That was approved, I believe, last week by in-town committee. Outstanding is a Massachusetts DCR grant for 175K. Newburyport, you know, you see this $225,000 expenditure is our share, and then Green Belt is bringing some assets to the table. So there are currently, and you also have a communication that we took out of the consent agenda and Stephen file, that from the Assistant Director for Land Use, I think it is, Director of Land, Assistant Director of Land Conservation, Vanessa Johnson-Hall, indicating Green Belt's role in this. So the recommendation committee was three to zero to approve, subject to the amended amendment.
Councillor Zead?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had learned a little bit more about this since the committee and the folks from the Belt were kind, take some time to explain it. So I think really the key to this is the conservation restriction is what I've learned, because that's going to, that's essentially what we are, it's really what we're buying in a sense. I mean, the comparison would be, okay, why don't you just buy the land yourself? And that's an option that could have been considered. But here, really, we're kind of joining forces with various other funding sources and the town of West Newbury and so forth. And the Green Belt will own the land, so really what the city gets is the conservation restriction. So that's the, that's the document, that's the document really that controls and is important. And I'm comfortable supporting this, provided that we get a copy of that so we can review it. And ultimately, I believe my understanding is we will have to approve it as well, as it is a land, it is a land transaction, you know, in some form. So that's just my thoughts on it in terms of what to look for in this, because that's going to control how our relationship really operates with all the other parties that are, that were mentioned really, that are also providing funding.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's true.
Motion to approve project eight, $10,000 for Oak Hill Cemetery.
Second.
This comes to you with a 3-0 vote from Budget and Finance Committee. And the idea of the grant, $10,000, is to assess the heritage trees, some of the oldest trees in the city, out of the Oak Hill Cemetery. They're older, of course, and they'll be assessed for tree health and safety, and perhaps to cut some limbs if recommended.
Any other discussion on this one? Project eight. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Motion to approve project nine, Bartlett Mall, $100,000.
Second.
So, Mr. President, this $100,000 is toward completion of the Bartlett Mall restoration project. It essentially will pay, will fund design engineering of estimated to be $40,000, general conditions, site prep, removal of organic material, silt erosion control, that's $26,000, and slope and drive construction, which is $71,800. The $100,000 is in addition to $77,218 that came from the moral trust, and that is sufficient to cover those, that work. What is, there's a gap in the total project, and the gap in the total project, which is, you know, probably around $430,000 approximately, that kind of contingency, and that is for the inclusive playground and equipment, there are grants out there looking for help, that is relatively expensive at $413,000. So that's the piece that's missing. Again, this was 3-0 to approve.
Further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any noes? No noes.
Motion to approve project 10, Perkins Shade Park, $12,000 approximately.
Second.
Second.
These funds would be used in Perkins Park to create a shade, a shade in the area. It supports youth services program which uses the park, and it will provide, again, relief from the sun. So 3-0 vote, recommend approval.
Further comment? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? 12, or no, 11, 10, where are we?
Motion to collectively approve projects 11, 12, and 13.
Second.
I'm calling, these are standard one for the stadium, $124,000 to cover the bond that we councils approved in the past. Cherry Hill, $12,000 for a bond, and also the allowed administrative costs.
I just have a question. How many, how many years are left on the stadium bond?
Ooh, I didn't look that up. I don't know if Ethan is on. I don't see him. I can't answer that question, though.
All right, I was just curious, anyway. Okay, councillor Elaine?
Yeah, I'm just looking at it here. I think it's right in there. Authorized the bonding up to $134,000 through 2030. Debt payments on the bond will continue through 2030. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, okay, so about a decade to go. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye on these three items.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opponents? That's it.
I'm done, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Whichever committee that's next is next. I haven't got my agenda open.
I think that would be me.
Education?
Okay, education.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, council president. The education committee met on June 15th, and we had President Superintendent Gallagher as well as Nancy Lysek, who's the school finance person. I call her the Ethan of the schools. Maybe I shouldn't, I should call Nancy the, whatever. Okay, anyways. So we talked a little bit about the financial health of the schools, given that we had approved the three months, well, the 112 budget, but for a three-month snapshot. So the colleagues, my fellow colleagues on the council committee here were really diligent in trying to get an understanding in the uncertainty in terms of fund, you know, fund availability in fall, given the planning involved with the world language expansion and some other aspects that were added onto the overall budget for the schools. And so we definitely had a great perspective, you know, the superintendent, the optimistic viewpoint, and then Nancy, who says she's more the pessimist. And I think together they balance well. But we kind of were a little bit more about the process that's gone through in terms of assessing and understanding the impact on transportation and the utilities and other factors that have been in play, given that school hasn't been in session since basically middle of March. So I do encourage people that to, the recording is available, and it is actually, it's just an hour meeting that we tend to meet for, and I do encourage people to listen in for some good details if you would like. The last meeting of the education committee tends to coincide with the end of school. However, we do still have three items in committee, one of which is the Acts of 1987, which is jointly sent to Budget and Finance and Education. And so, as you can see, Budget and Finance has had quite a few things on our agenda, but I believe I will be coordinating with the chair, and the intention was sometime in July to actually bring this up and have our joint meeting on this, on this order. So that's my quick update. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, I'm still sitting on the charter review report. I think when the mayor gets back from vacation, we'll finally try and reschedule that meeting. One thing that you probably noticed from the mayor's report, which we received and filed earlier tonight, is that the city now has custody and control over what used to be Newburyport redevelopment authority land. And the mayor and I discussed cooperating on, you know, getting the land developed into a park. We have a lot of work to do, as everyone knows. But I just want to point out to everyone that the General Government Committee actually has direct authority. Under the code, the responsibilities include supervision of city properties whose custody has not been assigned to a specific municipal department. So until this council assigns that land to a department, probably the waterfront trust is what we have in mind, as I recall, it's going to have to be handled through the General Government Committee. That's all I had. License and permits. Councillor Devlin, are you up there?
Hold on, hold on. Sorry about that. Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. That was definitely what I was waiting for. Neighborhoods and City Services?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Planning and Development?
Motion to approve Order 188, the preservation restriction on the Cushing House.
Second.
Second. All right, so this is the perpetual preservation restriction we spoke about earlier when we discussed the CPA funding. This is the one that would be held by our Newburyport Historic Society. There is a current preservation restriction on the Cushing House that's held by Mass Historic. The preservation covers the entire property of 98 High Street. That includes the Cushing House, the surrounding property that includes Perkins Mint, cobblestone area, and the formal gardens. The difference between the preservation restriction we have in our packet and what's with Mass Historical Society are the six additional photos, which I don't believe made it into the packet, but they are the pictures of the rear garden, the rear garden in detail, which has cobblestones that were replaced and completed last year in 2019. It has details of the fencing around the courtyard and the cisterns and the drywall covers. So we wanted to make sure that those pictures were in there, since we did have CPA funds that were going to be allocated to redo them. So the other am- funds that were going to be allocated to redo them. So the other amendment that we had to make to the preservation restriction, if you look at what's in your packet, at the, after you see the list of the six photos, there is a section that says, whereas, upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee and approved as Project XX, that will be filled in by Director Port as Project Four, by the City Council on September 9th, it should be 2019. We amended that in committee. It says 2020 in your packet. Other than that, I think that sums up the preservation restriction. We are truly just expanding upon what's already out there and we will be relying on Mass Historic to set this one in place for our Newburyport Historic Commission in the next year. So I think we are set with the Cushing House. Are there any questions?
Mr. President, I had one, if I might. Counselor Shan, I see a suggested amendment delineating photos seven through 12 from Counselor, I'm sorry, from Director Port. Are you referencing that also? Are you not including that?
No, those are already in the ordinance that should have been in the packet. Photos to be G through L, photos seven through 12. That is one of the amendments in the packet.
Okay. I don't, I don't see it.
I will send it to you.
Take your word for it. Okay, terrific.
No, it's, it's in the packet. I can't put my hands on it now, but I, I worked with Counselor Shan on that. So it's in the record.
Okay, very good.
I'll send you another record just so for your record, along with the corrected date.
Got you.
Yeah, and that, we don't need an amendment for the date because that's Scrivener's error. Obviously, they, it happened last, last September.
Right.
That's okay. Yeah. Yep. I, I agree with you. Any other discussion on the PR? Why don't we do a roll call because it is a property right?
Exactly. So this is Order 188 with amendments, approved by Counselor Shan, seconded by Counselor Khan. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Ragaman?
Yes.
Eleven, zero. Motion passes.
Anything else planning into? Yep, thank you. Anything else planning development?
Yes, I'd like to remove ordinance, ordinance 051 fences in the downtown overlay district.
Ooh, it's not in the packet.
It was a late file from Friday.
It was a late file. Second. Discussion. Chair Shan?
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just removing it to get it out of committee. Now, do I need to have a motion to approve it?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry. All those in favor of removal, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposing removal? It's out. Sorry. Another motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So in committee, we discussed fences. We also had a joint hearing with the Planning Board. What this is doing is, was requested by the zoning administrator. It seems the Montessori School wanted to build a fence to keep children enclosed. They were questioning how to do it. So the Ward Two Council worked with the zoning administrator to amend and update what we already have in our package regarding windows, doors, and signs in the DOD. What has been updated, that is in your, that was the late file in the packet, is basically clarifying the, the type of fences and where they can go and how tall they can be in the downtown overlay. We went through updates to the location, making sure that they stayed along sightlines currently within the historic district, not putting fences in an arbitrary location. We also talked about using historical materials, not wanting to use vinyl chain link fence or, what were the other comments? Lumber, dog-eared, or pressure-treated wood. The main historical materials would be wrought iron, masonry, and wood. There are, there are pictures in the packet that delineate what we are trying to maintain for the historic district. We also included the height of the fence, where, where it can be five feet in the backs and in the fronts, it would be three feet unless the visibility of the surface could be 50% visual perosity. That was added by one of our Planning Board members. That's basically so we don't have a, you think about chain link fences, we want to have historic fences, but we want to make sure if they are, if you see through them, it's 50, at least 50% visual perosity. The other thing with this ordinance is it is approved solely by the Planning Director and/or the zoning administrator. Folks do not have to go to the Planning Board to get approval for these. Though, out of committee, we approve this three to zero.
Further debate? Counselors Zede?
So just a question. So if somebody wanted to do a fence that, that did not conform to this, can, can they still go to the Planning Board and ask for, ask for relief on that? Or is, does this prescribe this and only this?
I would defer to the Planning Director. I believe you could still go to ask for relief. It is not the intent, but you could. Is the Planning Director?
Yeah, hold on. Let me unmute him. Director Port? Go ahead. Well, I'll, I'll jump in as the sponsor, just to explain what the language says, not whether it's good or bad. But the idea is to have a safe harbor. So if you, if you meet the criteria and you're under the maximum height, staff can approve it. You don't have to go and get, because right now you'd have to go and get a special permit, go through the full rigmarole. But some of the language is mandatory. So, you know, the guidelines on historic material, that, that's still mandatory. But when you go to the Planning Board, they'd be allowed to approve a, you know, 20-foot-high, you know, border wall, whatever you want.
So following on that question, if I may. So if, if that's the direction that, that the one was headed, why wouldn't the, why wouldn't it just be by right? You know, if you conform with these standards, you can, you can have a fence.
Well, it's essentially what it, that's essentially what it is, is staff, you need a human being to verify that they're meeting the standard. Otherwise, it's, you know, there's no, there's no one checking. So yeah, that, that's what staff does. Staff would just approve it.
As long as you conform to this ordinance.
Yeah, if you conform to the ordinance, it, it gets approved by staff.
And just to, I'm sorry to keep rolling here, but just, so in comparison to what is currently in place, there is no current limitation on, on materials or height or so forth, but everything must go to the Planning Board? Do I have that correct?
Not exactly. It's more vague, you know, because the entire DOD is subject to the Secretary of Interior Standards. But there were not, so you would go to the Secretary of Interior Standards, which, you know, goes on for pages and pages on fences and walls. But as, you know, we put it into the code here so that neither staff nor an applicant nor the commission have to go reaching online to the Secretary's standards. I just have them right here. Well, I mean, Counselor, I'm sorry, Director Port is unmuted. So.
Aye, thank you. I agree with all the comments that have been said by Counselor Ragaman and Counselor Shan today. I think it's just a streamlined process for fences and site walls in the downtown is what it really amounts to. Doesn't warrant having a whole special permit hearing before the Planning Board generally.
Counselors Zede, are you all set?
One last question. Yeah, so if, if somebody already has a fence that does not comply with this, can they, can they repair their fence? If, you know, if, I don't know if there are any chain link fences, for example, anywhere in the DOD, but if there were, could somebody just fix what they've already got?
Well, if it's nonhistoric, if their existing fence is nonhistoric, they're exempt anyway. You know, so there, if there's an architectural feature on a house in the downtown overlay district, you, they don't preserve it anyway. So if someone has a chain link fence, it's not historic, then there's, there's nothing to preserve.
And this is commercial only, pretty much, since it's DOD?
Yeah, it's DOD. So if you're in a, if you're in a, if you're in a family zone within the DOD, and those do exist, so example would be Otis Place, I think, in Fair Street, one side of Fair Street. If it's a one or two family home, you're also entirely exempt, even if it isn't a historic building.
Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the first reading for Ordinance 51. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Ragaman?
Yes.
Eleven yes. Motion passes first reading.
Chairman Shan, anything else?
That is it for tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Public utility? No, public safety.
Nothing from public safety except a, a point of order. I'd just like to say preliminarily, I'm, I'd like to schedule a follow-up on Ordinance 190 from tonight on Wednesday, July 8th, from 6:00 to 7:30 with the Council of all.
The counselors, how's that sound? The counselors, we have the chair's attention. So how does that sound?
That works for me.
Yes.
Okay. My acclamation, it sounds good. Thank you very much. Now, public utilities.
Ah, yes, Mr. President. Motion to approve Order 184 as amended coming out of committee, which I'll explain.
Second.
So Order 184 is a contractor application from Mr. Michael Mazoda and the, the committee did review it this evening. Most of the paperwork was in order, but there were a couple of things that the committee wanted to condition the approval on, and that is subject to the following three things. Verifying that the Haverhill application that was included was approved, subject to the Merrimack letter being verified as being approved. These are the three references, by the way, that were submitted with the application, and subject to the Groveland item being approved as well because included in the packet was just a, an application. So we're just trying to conform to the, to the requirements of the application. The DPS Director did, who I spoke to, did, did support this one. And with those amendments, those three conditions of the three, basically of the three support letters or reference letter being verified, the vote in committee was three to nothing. And the bond has been.
Any other discussion?
Yep, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion. I'm sorry.
That passes. Next.
Motion to approve 185, subject to amendments made in committee as well.
Second.
So similar thing here. 185, the third reference, you know, is missing. We do, we do ask in the application for three references. So subject to a third acceptable reference being provided, the committee voted three to nothing to approve. Again, the DPS Director spoke in favor with me when I spoke with him, and then the bond has been paid as well.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Eleven, nothing. Anything else?
And last one is motion to approve Order 186, no amendments.
Second.
Any comment?
Three-zero out of committee.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's it. Thank you. Public utilities. Onto rules.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Good of the order. Nothing tonight. How about a mo, go ahead, Counselor Zede?
Well, I just wanted to throw out there, you know, is, is there interest in, in not having our July meeting or in maybe modifying our July-August schedule to have one in July and one in August? I don't know about others, but oddly enough, meeting volume has maybe increased actually, and we've dealt with a lot of things. And I just don't know how, you know, we may have some business. It's, it's hard to say, but I wanted to throw that out there for consideration.
Counselor Shan?
When is the open space plan supposed to be coming in? That's probably a question for Director Port because I thought there was a timeline on that that needed to be taken care of.
Matthew Coogan, Chief of Staff, you're on, but you're muted.
I don't, excuse me, I don't believe the, the open space plan, as far as it getting to council, that is time-sensitive. I think we, we had to hit a submission deadline to the state.
Whoop. Sorry, I hit the wrong button, Matt.
Okay. Did, I mean, I think I said what I had to say. Did everyone hear what I had to say?
Yeah, no, if I understand, the deadline, they had to hit a July 1 deadline to get it into the state. But it's still cooking there and we have not, I don't know if there's any deadline for us yet. But I'm, I did discuss with the administration what they needed in July and my understanding from the last conversation with the mayor is there are some things we probably have to vote on on the, on the 13th. So I'd like to keep that meeting. One advantage of that meeting is, of course, we're doing them all remotely. So people can leave town if they have somewhere to go. And then we're not meeting again until August. And, you know, I don't really know what to do on August meetings. We'll have to talk about it more also because remember the budget coming in. We're all screwed up on our budget timing. So I don't, I don't know. It's, it's a thought. We all have been working pretty hard, but mercifully, there's one meeting in July on the 13th.
Anything else? Good of the order? No. How about a motion adjourned?
A move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Were adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.